The public that is assembled here. It certainly is my pleasure to introduce to my appointments to the positions of Assistant City Managers. And tonight, we have both of them present with us. First, I'd like to introduce Mr. Chris Beshler. Chris, if you will stand. Chris most recently worked for the Commonwealth of Virginia where he served as Director of General Services. A majority of his previous experience is in the area of utilities. Prior to being appointed Deputy Chief Administrative Officer of Operations at the City of Richmond, Beshler started work there in 2006 as Director of Public Utilities. Additionally, for 26 years prior to joining the City of Richmond, he worked at Yankee Gas Services Company, Connecticut's largest natural gas utility. He started his career with the company as a staff engineer, ultimately transitioning to the position of Vice President of Operations. Beshler received a Master's of Business Administration degree and a Bachelor of Science degree in mechanical engineering, both from the University of Connecticut. Please do welcome our Assistant City Manager, Chris Beshler. Our second Assistant City Manager is Mrs. Natasha Hampton Clayton. Natasha, if you will stand. Mrs. Hampton Clayton has served over 20 years of experience in executive public administration and operations. The Assistant City Manager for the City of Marimar, Florida formerly provides executive oversight of the city's Human Resources Department, as well as Social Services, Community and Economic Development, Cultural Affairs, and Marketing and Communications. Hampton Clayton has worked her way up the ranks for the City of Marimar, served in various roles such as Logistics and Quality Control Officer, Public Works Administration Services Superintendent, Director of Human Resources, and Chief Marketing Officer. She was recently named South Florida's 50 Most Powerful and Influential Leaders and South Florida's 25 Most Prominent and Influential Women in Business. For South Florida's honor, she was featured in the international publication Caribbean Today for making a lasting impression on the U.S. business landscape. Mrs. Hampton Clayton graduated from Florida Memorial University with a degree in Political Science and Public Administration. She also obtained a Master's of Public Administration degree from Nova Southeastern University and is credentialed in Labor Relations and Emergency Management Communications. I would also say that her duties will be heading the portfolio that includes the Departments of Community and Business Development, Human Relations, Human Resources, Parks and Recreation. ACM Beshler will be responsible for Public Works and Water Resources, Engineering, and Development Services. Please welcome Assistant City Manager Natasha Hampton Clayton. As we, as I have made these appointments, that also means that we have an opportunity to send Peter Varney back to his peace and restful retirement before he agreed to come and join the team and to assist me in overseeing the management of the city. Peter certainly has been a joy to work with, an unbelievable resource of information and history about this city, and certainly someone who is dedicated to public service and truly loves the City of Rocky Mountain. So as I bring on new Assistant City Managers, it's very difficult but heartfelt to say goodbye to someone who has really helped me tremendously over these past several months. And we will miss you, Peter, but I know that some trailers out there asking, "Well, where are you?" Well, yeah. So, but thank you again for your service and commitment to the City of Rocky Mountain.
We're going to move on to item number six now. This is petitions to be received from the public. I'm going to read the statement and then we'll begin. This is the petitions from the public portion of our City Council meeting. If you'd like to sign up to address the council, you need to sign up. If you did not get a form to sign up, please raise your hand and someone will bring you a form. Any comments should be directed to the council as a whole and not to individual council members or city staff. This is your opportunity to raise a question, present a request to the council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments, but may refer the matter to the city manager or staff for follow-up. You're asked that you speak from the podium in a civil, non-argumentative and respectful manner. Personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated and will be asked to sit down or be removed from the meeting. Time will be monitored in order to give everyone an opportunity to speak. You'll have three minutes, then we'll give you a heads up in about two and a half minutes. If your comments are in regards to an item that's a subject of a public hearing, wait until that time. I don't think we've got any public hearings tonight, so it would be at this point. So right now, I'd like to invite up Kevin Harris to speak.
Kevin Harris, 1232 Driver Circle. And I just want to take, take this opportunity to say to the City Council that I'm grateful, City Council, and to the mayor for all of the progress that we are experiencing throughout our city and, and the new development improvements underway in the east side and west side and north end and south end, and certainly not to forget the development or activity in downtown and center city. So there's a lot of work still to do, but collectively, this City Council has initiated, encouraged, and enabled progressive and inclusive development throughout our city. And you've also postured the city for greater growth and future progress. So I just want to take this, this moment to say that I am confident that this diverse City Council will make the right decision, selecting the best person to fill the Ward Three Council seat. I know it'll be someone that will represent the neighborhoods within that ward with creativity, someone that will represent them with passion, and they'll have a drive to make a difference in that community. So I'm confident that this City Council will make, and its collective wisdom will make its best decision. I know that God will have His way and that it will be for our good. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is my honor to God, to the mayor, City Councilmen, members of this city, I didn't know I'd be called this quick. I just signed my name. But I'm happy to be here, Mayor. I'm concerned after living here in this city 84 years. God has blessed me to see many things go on here that should not have gone on, and many things who, that have gone on, we appreciate. And I want to say to the City Councilmen, I want to appreciate you, Mayor, and the City Councilmen, for the very fine work you have done over the years to try to make Rocky Mountain a better city. You have done a tremendous job, and I can understand the heartaches and the headaches and the trouble that you have gone through with. But through it all, God brought you this far, and if He bring you this far, He'll lead you on. I'd like to see unity in the City Councilmen. I'd like to see people working together. The only way I feel that you can achieve the victory, Brother Mayor, is that work together. Together you stand, divided you fall. And I want to certainly appreciate our new City Manager and the System Managers who are coming on board, and I trust that you will deal fair and righteous with the members of this city. We are depending on you. We depending on the mayor and the City Councilmen from the beginning until now. I have seen many mayors come and go. I've seen many City Councilmen come and go. Yes, I've been here 84 years, and I thank God that where this convention center is now, I remember when it used to be the June germ of there. Amen. But things are happening. I'm appreciative, and I hope that the Councilmen will choose and use common sense. Yeah, that's like common sense to make things happen. This is the only way I feel like that it will come about. Mayor Corn, thank you so very much for giving me the opportunity to say what I said. Got more to say, but I realized the time. Thank you so much.
Samuel Bound?
I'm just a little upset right now because what's going in Ward Three? And I'm just getting to the fact, we got a man from Tarburg, and he don't know nothing about Ward Three. We got people been here 24 years, 25 years, and resident in Ward Three, and it look like they ain't win, get the position because we got to vote on. You know what? I'm just sitting here, if we're going to do this, you need to let the citizen vote on that. You know, at the end of the day, the citizen's at the top. Y'all, y'all are the citizen. The citizen need to make that call. They don't need to be in y'all's head. They really don't. War Four, I'm just going to say this. Angela gave you the same position, the same respect, and I think you should give the same respect to the people that's from Rocky Mountain, because at the end of the day, I'm Rocky Mountain before I'm anything. I don't have nothing to do with Nash County. I don't have nothing to do with Canita, Tarburg, Millers, none of that. I was born and raised here, and this is who I'm a guy. I don't need these people keep coming to Rocky Mountain, Virginia, DC, and everybody all over the world's coming here. We got people here that can fill these jobs just like those people. We looking over these people. And I just seen the basketball court, jolly. He from Ward Three, and that man grew up to be a great coach. So anything could come out of Ward Three if we give it a chance. Now, we just, we just tired of this, man. We, we just doing too much up here, man. We, we really are. You know, I'm not going to come here to bash nobody today, but I'm just going to say it like I'm speaking, God speaking to me right now. You know, nobody else ain't going to say it. I don't know why people not saying, "Yeah, y'all did a great job to this city." You know, you building it up. I'm not knocking on that. But Escon County been, been looked down for 30, 40 years now. You know, the man is coming from Canita, no disrespect to him. He don't know how many murders that been over the last five years that the people been over there watching and seeing. I lost, I lost five people over there.
You got about 30 seconds.
Okay. But I'm just saying, man, we just need to come together, and the people that deserve it, deserve to be sitting there seeking the month, the people that live in that ward, not just moved in that ward. And that's, and, and I, I just don't, it just got me rattled right now that we going through this decision together. Yo, and I feel like y'all make that decision, if he not going to get squared in the day or nothing like that, I feel like all of you should be fired, because that's how I look at it.
Thank you. Your time's up.
One second. Evening to you, to the mayor and councilman tonight. I am Bronson Williams, an advocate for Ward Three's seat tonight. As a resident first, an advocate second, it is my desire, the person who just moved into Ward Three does not in fact meet the requirements to serve on this council. Further, this person cannot, if voted on tonight, take the oath of office and be seated tonight. Ward Three needs representation as soon as possible, and tonight is as soon as possible. What I look at is my engagement. I, I obviously, I had an interview, I said before, all of you, I just passed Monday. One person has talked about creative and passion. Those are items that I believe I possess. Growing up, riding my bicycle on Branch Street and Clark Street, Tyann and Lancaster, that's what I call home. That's what I came to this council just a few months ago and talked about Wi-Fi for the children in our park, because I understand that there is a need in our community. I don't have to wait to learn about the needs. I see the needs every single day, and I come and advocate for these needs to this body, to other organizations throughout our community. Councilman Andre Knight said before the application, before the interview process that it's a setup. Those are his exact words, and, and at that time, I questioned whether or not it was a setup, because you have one candidate who doesn't appear to be qualified today, but at some time point later, he can be qualified. According to the city attorney yesterday committed hope, that if he was appointed today, he cannot take the seat. Now, if I go and try to get a house or a car, I guarantee that those individuals will not give me the keys to that house or car until I fully qualify. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Welkins? Yeah, something I thought somebody asked me, but... Good evening. I stand here as a resident of Ward Three. I also stand here as an applicant. You all know me, you know my experience. Over the years, I have held the position of First Vice Chair of the North Carolina State Democratic Party. I have sat on the Utility Review Board for this city. I have also been on the MLK Commission for this city. I have served on the State MLK Commission, but right now, I don't like what I see. This whole selection process has been tainted, and I know tainted when I see it. We have one candidate, candidate that should have never been considered, never been interviewed. They, as Mr. Williams said, they cannot even take the position if appointed tonight, and you all will appoint him. I know. I've heard it. And so with that said, I want to say, I want to thank Councilman Knight. Many people talk about him, say he's not for the people. He is. He was the one person that stood up and said what needed to be said, that, I hate to call names, but that Mr. Joyner should not be appointed to represent Ward Three. I've been in Ward Three over 18 years, and to totally discount me and my qualifications to totally discount Bronson Williams and the other two black women who applied for this position, I am totally appalled, and I want nothing to do with this process, and therefore, I withdraw my name from consideration.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I stand as a resident of Ward Three. I've lived in Ward Three for 45 years, and I think that Ward Three needs some representation that know Ward Three. Some, someone that has been around Ward Three for a while, not just someone that just come into the city and just want to be a part of Ward Three now. We need some, someone to sit on the council that has been a part of Ward Three, know what Ward Three is going through, and know some of the things that Ward Three is looking at. So my recommendation to you today is to look at who is there and the ones that's been in Ward Three and consider what Ward Three adds to offer.
Thank you, sir.
Louis Turner, 15th street, Washington Street. Mr. Mayor, council members, they huge in our place. The issue that preceded me, I didn't come to address that. Let's be conscious of your God, but I suggest to the concerned people that you have recourse. If the party has not resided long enough to participate, put it for a judge, any judge. What I rose is on the agenda, on the agenda, petition from the public, and this is my first time, when I go through this agenda and I see all of these issues that I don't quite understand, I came to ask the person in charge, the person in the management position concerning these issues, explain them to me. Agenda item seven. I would like somebody, you don't have to do it tonight, you do it tomorrow, it's John Those, those issues on agenda item seven, all of these years for the grants and stuff, what is that, what is that on back? I need somebody to explain that to me. So I understand when I go out on the street, what's supposed to be happening or just not I expect to have this crowd, and I know the town won't commit, otherwise, I sit right here and cook the 12 o'clock until you go through there. I'm going to, I, I'm not going to ask for that, but I'm entitled to have, this is a public meeting. This is not a committee to hold, whatever. This is a public meeting, and I'm entitled to publicly have explained to me what we're going to do.
We'll do that when we get to it.
So, so, so. What I want, the person to explain to me whenever that happens, he's got three minutes to explain to me.
We'll do it in three minutes. Thank you, Mr. Turner. We'll start explaining to you. We'll do it in three minutes.
I'd like to say good evening to all the council members and everybody sitting up there this evening and everybody here. I was a little confused and baffled with what is going on in my ward. It has recently come to my attention as soon as I came into the building, because I came to a regular meeting that I make every month, but I have a lot of concerns about what's getting ready to transpire, as everybody has talked about the gentleman that is being considering for Ward Three. I'm concerned about a lot of other people that are considered for Ward Three too, because I live in Ward Three, and I work the streets of Ward Three, and I have not seen anybody there. I'm, I don't know who's there when our children are being murdered. I know I am. I don't know where they are when we have children in and living in slum places that rats are running in their houses and their children have to be there. I'm there teaching them how to poke up them oaths. I'd like to know where everybody is that is so concerned about Ward Three, because I know I love Ward Three. I raised my kids there, and even though I left and came back, I came back in Ward Three no matter what the crime rate was in Ward Three, because I believe that wherever I go, the neighborhood needs to change and not me. So I'm out on the streets daily. I go and feed the hungry. I don't know where everybody else is. I know I'm just as poor as the people in the neighborhood that I live in, so that's why I'm out there. Everybody's politicking here, and I'm offended of our system, because we deserve the best. We're the, the, the forgotten corner, but I don't care who y'all pick. Whoever y'all pick, know that I'm running next year too, and I will win if I got to take everybody to the poll. So y'all can make up y'all mind today to vote in somebody that's not supposed to be there, but trust me, I will pick it and pick it and pick it every last one of y'all, because y'all are not thinking about what goes on in my neighborhood. That's my neighborhood that I have to live in, and you're just putting anybody there, and it's not fair. Thank you. I'm finished.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am a, I've been in Ward Three for 46 years. I started my journey when Councilman Wiggins ran for City Council the first time. I had no idea what the, what the duties of a City Councilman was. Councilman Wiggins sat down, he explained to me what it was all about, and I started a community organization 20 years ago. What I'm standing for you to say tonight is, experience and passion has no boundary. For those of you that do not know, I had the opportunity, when we talked about Reverend Joyner, I met Reverend Joyner with the Donley's Partnership for Children Community Fellows Program. The next time I met Reverend Joyner, it was the Clark Street Project Program. That was a two-year program, and for those of you that are not aware, you can ask anybody in Clark Street that was there, the drug houses that he went into, when he would come to me, we walked the streets together, and when things got hot, Mary let's pray. And I believe I have met all three candidates, and I believe that all three has a passion for the neighborhood, but when it comes to experience, I feel that experience outweighs how long you've been in the, in the ward, because anybody in Clark Street, the drug houses know. You can ask some of... You could ask some of the ministers that walked with him in that neighborhood, the drug houses that he went into and the dangers that they put their lives to. I've been in that community for forty-six years with the Clark Street Project. We started the block captain program, we had mentoring program. But when the two years was over, there was no one to continue the program. All of the people that worked with me for the last twenty years, they are dead. When I look at Mr. Barney. I told him years ago when they started Hollis Street, Happy Hill.
You've got about thirty seconds.
I said by the time you get to Clark Street, I'll be dead and gone. But as I stand before you tonight, everybody that worked with me, most of that worked with me in Clark Street, they are dead. They are in bad health. But I stand before you to say that you, those of you, it's not about politics. Because Reverend Joyner was in that neighborhood, we didn't talk about politics. We talked about the condition. He helped organize the block captains. He helped brought mentors into the neighborhood. But it's not about who's running for what. And I believe that three people that I, that I know, that I've worked with, my prayer is if they don't, I know that one person can be chosen, but I believe that all three that I've met are gonna keep the passion and keep working with whoever get that position. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's my expectation. Whoever gets the position, the other two, I would be looking to see you work with us in the neighborhood.
Dr. Charles Chandler Jr.?
Good evening. Maybe I should say greetings. I'll keep it relatively short, but I just wanna say this. I haven't been here forty years, but I've been black all my life. And I fought for issues related to political matters, voting rights, discrimination most of my life, beginning at about the fifth or sixth grade. And this process really should have been presented to the people before we got to all of this. Not just the question of qualifications. It's fairly clear that almost, well, all of you concede that you have a candidate who's not qualified. There was a deadline by which all the candidates or applicants for this position were supposed to have filed their information and indicated that they were residents and that they were registered voters. So what is the issue? Is this something that only happens in one of our districts? I mean, what, what is the real issue here? The real issue is somebody's trying to create an advocate where there is none. That seat would still be empty. And it would appear, but I listened very carefully to the city attorney. If he has an opinion on this issue, I believe the opinion should include whether or not the candidate has been qualified as of the time of the deadline passed for having application. If you want a new process and you wanna go out and start a new process, you gotta show whether or not this one worked. And it's fairly apparent that it has not. I listened to the, I listened to every interview the other day. And I think the citizens should have been available or should have been allowed to sit there, but it's done in a little committee room, so-called committee of the whole. But, but the questions didn't even ask about involvement in the neighborhood and the ward. The questions sounded more like they were talking about a different position altogether. Everything was citywide and the questions were all focused citywide. But the fact of the matter is, there's no question that we do not have a registered voter in the person of Reverend Joyner. Whether he's a nice guy or not, that's another question. He might be great. He might be a genius. But he wasn't qualified as of the date of the deadline to apply. And therefore should not be somebody that's causing us all this time to argue and debate whether or not that's a candidate.
You've got about thirty seconds.
I listened to all the interviews. I would have probably indicated that two were, were higher rated than another. There was one about the middle and two that did not appear to be as prepared. But the fact of the matter is, you did have four qualified candidates. And I would ask you not to follow your conscience, but the law of right, not might, the law of right. And, and I just ask you to really reconsider this scheme because it's not appropriate in this city or anywhere else in this country.
That's so. B.M.I. Smith?
Hey, Councilor, City Manager, City Managers. Glad to have you in our fair city. In eighteen ninety-seven, the city established a fire brigade. And in eighteen ninety-seven, those who were part of that fire brigade were, were all African-American, they were all black. Some, more than one hundred years later, more than a century later, we have fewer black firemen than we did when we started. There were twenty-six in the beginning, we have fewer now than when we started. That has been an issue of diversity on our fire department. But not only in the fire department, I see there are other departments where diversity is an issue also. Hopefully in the next few days, I have an opportunity to, to set a schedule to meet with the city manager and we can sit down and talk about some of the issues that the firemen have and the black firemen have. But we often, it's not just a, a black issue, but it's also a diversity issue in, in, in terms of gender, females and, and other minority groups. As far as I, I know that tonight that they are, that you're going to do some deciding on who will fill the third ward seat. I agree with the others that one person was not qualified. Does, does that mean that I have something against the person? No. It's just that the person did not meet the qualifications that all the other, that the other four candidates were required to meet. And so in all fairness, I think that, that, that person should be disqualified. Not because of who he is, but because he did not meet the qualifications. I think that that is important and that is true transparency. That is, that is being a council that is responsible. As you're saying, we will not do anything that will even, even seem to be something that, that should not be qualified. So I hope that you will make the, the decision, the best decision. I know, I, I have confidence that you will. But I will say that there are only four that are qualified and one who is not. Let's, let's think about that. Also, I remember I told you Reverend George Washington Dudley. This room is named after him and it is in disrepair. You're working on it. I need you to get it fixed.
Yeah, I'll work it. Brenda Cooper?
Good evening. My name is Brenda Cooper. With Team Estelle Street, Rocky Mountain, South Rocky Mountain, in Ward Three. I'm here the issues there about the, what I'm very concerned about the new seats because that's my ward. My point is definitely this. The responsibility of you is for the people, not each other, but to the people in the ward. So I expect that you will make the decision based on us and hear what we like to, we have to say. My other concern is that in our ward, we have brought this to you before, down Church Street, there is a warehouse, that the top is fractally lapped over and it's been that way now since last year. And the storm is gonna begin to rage again pretty soon. And that thing may come down on somebody, somebody's house, somebody's person. And we would hate to have that to happen down there. And everybody know that warehouse down that street. And you can see it when you drive down there. And just like you're preparing different places in the city, we would like our corridor repaired and look just as nice as any other place in this city. I love where I live. I'm careful where I live. I don't take any pauses about where I live. So if somebody says South Rocky Mountain, my eyes and my ears pick up because I'm concerned about what happens in South Rocky Mountain. So I hope that you will look at that again and hopefully soon we'll see some real results. And these building owners are held just responsible as the homeowners in our area.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could the manager direct staff to follow up with Ms. Cooper on that issue? Because she hasn't spoken at the time before.
Certainly. We will do that.
I don't have any signing sheets at this point in time. The petitions from the public is closed and we're gonna move on to the next item, which is, we're adding a few agenda. This is a presentation of the budget by the city manager. I think this is a brief overview of what we're gonna be dealing with in the next two or three weeks involving our, our budget plan.
To the Honorable Mayor Holmes and City Council, it is my privilege to present the city manager's proposed annual operating budget for fiscal year 2019. This proposed budget reflects the fiscal implementation of my operational plans to uphold excellence in current operations, enhance performance in technology, community development and economic development, achieve city council goals and provide the support necessary for the successful operations of the Rocky Mountain Event Center. The total proposed budget for fiscal year 2019 is two-hundred-and-ten million, two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety dollars, which is a four-point-six percent increase from the adopted budget for the current fiscal year 2018 and a three-point-six decrease from the revised budget of the current fiscal year. The proposed budget is balanced with the recommendation of a two-point-five cent increase in the property tax rate from sixty-six cents to sixty-eight point five cents per one-hundred dollar of assessed value. And this increase is solely to fund the next stage of annual debt payments for the Rocky Mountain Events Center. In other words, this is a plan several years back and this is recognized this time this year to pay for both the principal and interest on borrowed funds. No further increases to monthly fees or utility rates are recommended as a part of this proposed budget. As you can see here, there's also no monthly fee or utility rate increases proposed. There are proposed staffing changes for the budget. It is my recommendation that we add thirteen new positions or full-time equivalent positions. One in management support, two in employee development, three to support facility maintenance. And the biggest one that you see here are seven positions proposed for the creation of a new Department of Information Services. I don't think I need to tell anyone how important technology is to this organization and to this community. Currently, Information Services is held within the Finance Department. The proposal is to stand this up as a freestanding department, but it is also gonna require additional support positions to make this work. There's also a proposal for one position in community and business development. The proposed budget objectives, of course, again, are the Rocky Mountain Event Center. I think the community certainly is excited about the progress that is being made at the event center. It is scheduled to open in the fall. And we certainly want this to be the jewel that it is destined to be for this city and also for this region. Other objectives include community and business development. This is a department that was implemented January of this year. So it's been in a functioning format for almost five months. But next year's budget certainly proposes a full year of operations. I mentioned information technology. Another objective is infrastructure. Needless to say that we do have aging buildings in our community and I'll get into a little more detail about that. But not only buildings, but also streets and other things that are necessary for the efficient operations of our city. We also have an objective to continue the development of employees here in the city as well as customer service. Here you will see some of the financial impact of some of the things that I've already mentioned. The Rocky Mountain Event Center, this budget is proposed to spend two-point-three billion dollars. Part of that is for debt service, but also for operational needs. Roof replacements, again, the city's facilities are in dire need of attention. Two roof replacements are proposed, one for the senior center and the other for the judicial center. Community and business development. We have advanced a number of funds from other areas within the budget so that all of the funds associated with community and business development are now within the general fund. You'll see that it's proposed that information technology in order to stand up this department as well as to continue with some of the infrastructure that's needed to support our technology is in place. City hall repairs presently to replace the two elevators that are in dire need. We've been fortunate, we haven't had a major catastrophe need to happen with those elevators, but it is well past time for them to be replaced. A number of fire station improvements you see there, as well as motor vehicle replacements. Continuing on, we do recognize that there are needed repairs along the Douglas plots. Many of those buildings now need dire attention. There are several parks, CIP projects that are proposed for the development community and for council. Standing up a development services one-stop shop so that when contractors and developers come to access the city for inspections and permits, that that is a very seamless process. It's also proposed that we have human resources staffing increases there. A third assistant city manager communications and marketing. A master plan for Battle Park redevelopment. And that is from Battle Park all the way into the Longest Month Community and Park. So that gives you sort of a idea of some of the things that are being proposed. Additional internal audit, auditor is what that should say. Maintenance staffing, as we take on more and more of these buildings, it's necessary to have on time during the day maintenance of people rotating through the buildings to make sure that they're clean and proper for the convenience. Development area of inspections, there'll be a need to add additional staffing there. This is a new one, Parks and Recreation Boys and Girls Club Hero Program. You'll also find in your budget, Event Center sponsorship. This allows for the council to dedicate certain funds to support programs that the community may have an interest in over at the event center. I would underscore that everything that happens at the event center, there will be a cost associated to it. And so this gives the council the opportunity to support those community events that may not have all the funds raised, if you will, for their activities at the event center. Community events are very popular here in the city as they should be. And we're starting to see. And, uh, we're starting to see, uh, even greater attendance. And so oftentimes, greater attendance means, uh, additional support. And so that's what is represented there. Uh, community conversations. We've talked a little bit about, uh, the, uh, issue of the Confederate flag and having community dialogue about, around issues such as that. So, uh, there's a request for ten thousand dollars to, um, support, support that. So, the total significant increases to the budget, uh, particularly the general fund, uh, is over seven million dollars. Uh, that was offset by reductions that were identified by the staff, which then, uh, moves to the next slide. What other revenue changes were implemented in order to, um, balance, um, that gap. There was an increase in the animal tax increase in vehicles, uh, the amount shown there. Uh, our local option sales tax generated, uh, five-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, uh, additional dollars. There were funds that came in from other indoor rental revenues and, um, the motor vehicle license, uh, in the interest of time, I don't want to read all of that. Um, I would call attention though to the very last one, the return and transfer from the gas fund. It's by understanding in, uh, current year's budget, those funds were not made available, but, uh, they are, or projected to be available for next year. Increase financing proceeds from the CIP, um, event center revenues to balance the operational, uh, costs. Also, um, very pleased to say that there was no change or no increase in fund balance appropriated for next year and then, um, just a minor adjustment. In terms of the utility funds, again, there is no proposed increase in utility rate fees, but the priorities were, or are to assure reliable service delivery and funding our CIP projects, uh, energy resources management support, continuing to address our water and sewer asset management, stormwater system rehabilitation. So, uh, in short, this is the proposed, uh, budget for, uh, the council. I think I would be remiss if I did not say, um, how much we appreciate the work of, um, the finance director, Amy Sager, as well as the budget evaluation manager, Ken Hunter, for putting this budget together, along with, uh, all the department directors and their staffs who worked very tirelessly for sixty-seven months to come to a point where we have a recommended budget to produce to, uh, the city council. I think that the city of Rocky Mountain is in a very strategically poised position now. Uh, if we want to, uh, be in the major leagues, then we have to play in the major leagues. Otherwise, we will revert back. But the city is in a very, uh, good position to go forward. I think that the city council's objectives and, uh, goals are right on top of this. And I hope that, uh, what has been presented so far, um, will meet, um, the interest of council and the community. So with that, um, I will look forward to our future, uh, conversations about the budget and, uh, look forward to its adoption.
And, and what of those states will have budget meetings, do you have those?
Uh, I know that the next one is gonna be, um, May the twenty-first and then I think we pick up again on the twenty-ninth.
That's yours. May, May thir- May thirtieth.
May thirtieth.
May thirtieth.
May thirtieth. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We're gonna move on now to item number seven, uh, if the manager comes back up. A is a consideration of following temporary street closing. This is a request of a temporary street closing from, uh, Deborah Combs and Germantown Celebration Committee to close Beaman Street from New Street to Beaman. Uh, this is for two to six on Saturday, May sixth. Twenty-sitings for a Germantown celebration. The next item is a consideration of a request for temporary street closing capacity. Debbie Richardson to close eleven block of Plan Street and sixteen-hundred block of Harrow Road. This is from Linda, filed on Saturday, June ninth for a awareness day. Item B on the consent agenda is, uh, following tax release and refunds. It's a Schedule A or Schedule B. Item C is a consideration of adoption of following two thousand year, two thousand seventeen, eighteen fiscal year ordinance and amendments, uh, the budget ordinance amendments. One increases the appropriations for reimbursement costs of repairs incurred due to Hurricane Matthew. Uh, the second is an increase in appropriations to the gas fund for purchasing natural gas for resale to customers. Third item is an increase in appropriations in general fund for providing snacks to after-school program participants. Four is an increase in appropriations in the general fund for receipt of NCDOT reimbursement for cost of courage in roadway, snow and ice removal. And five is an increase in appropriations in the general fund for the National Recreation and Parks Association grant the fund programs to increase healthy snacks and food, physical activity and nutrition education for youth. Uh, item D there is a grant project ordinance closeout. Uh, there's several out there. One is a five-center installment grant. Second one was a community AUD implement grant. Three was a Buckle Up for Life grant. Uh, fourteen and fifteen was something from the, uh, Edward Burn Immortal Justice Assistant Grant. Five was for Bulletford Vest. Six was the government's Crown Commission Grants and there's three of those. Item seven is in transit and again, uh, we're gonna address Mr. Turner's question there. Amy, if you're here, maybe you could turn that to, to Mr. Turner. Uh, this is for fiscal year two thousand eleven, NCDOT laxing funds. B, the American Recovery and Investment Act. Uh, C was a rural evening service grant, uh, seventeen. Uh, D, the same thing, except it was two thousand seventeen. And then we have something for fifteen and sixteen, which was a rural mobility management operating program. And then there's a whole list of them on the next page. So, could you give us just an overview of that, Amy, so Mr. Turner knows more, uh, understanding?
Sure. Um, these are our transit grants and there's a, there's a number of them. We get them every year. As you can see, there's a, a number of them. But what the, the way the program operates is each year we get funding for operating the transit urban. There's also a capital component. There's various components to operating the bus system. So, these operate on project ordinance and project ordinances are adopted each year when we get the grant and they actually live through the life of the actual grant. So when the grant's over, when we've completed the purpose of the grant and they close out. So all of these are related to the transit system, but it is to close out projects for funding, federal funding, that we have completed. And I'm, I'm happy. Who, Mr. Turner?
Mr. Turner, please.
Mr. Turner, I don't know if you have a specific question or, um, I'll stay afterwards and happy to explain any of the grants you might have a question about.
As long as I know where your office is, I'll go.
I'll catch up with you afterwards.
All right, thank you. Uh, the recommended actions are to approve the consent agenda inclusive of the approval of temporary street closings, tax releases, and adoption of ordinances.
Allode.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Rogers, second by Councilmember Miller. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item seven is approved. Item eight is a consideration of a ordinance ordering the community code inspector to proceed with demolition of the following substandard property. It's, uh, one property there on three hundred, three oh two Middle Street. Recommended actions to adopt the ordinance.
Allode.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bullock, second by Councilmember Watkins. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item eight is approved. Item nine is a consideration of the preliminary assessment role prepared to recover the cost incurred by the city. This is in connection with the housing code enforcement on the following properties. There's a list there, A through K. The recommended actions to adopt the resolution of determination of cost of repair, demolition of substandard housing structures, adopting the resolution of primary assessment role, and three, scheduling a public hearing for June eleventh, two thousand eighteen. Do you hear motion?
Allode.
Councilmember Bullock, second by Councilmember Miller. Is that correct? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item nine is approved. Item ten is a consideration of the resolution authorizing electronic payment as defined by North Carolina statute, um, one fifty-nine dash two eight. Uh, this updates new audit and disbursement rules that became effective on November the first, two thousand seventeen. The recommended actions to adopt the resolution. Do you hear motion?
Allode.
Motion by Councilmember Rogers, second by Councilmember Watkins. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item ten is approved. Item eleven is the consideration of the budget review work session, uh, which the manager just went over. Uh, there's one on May twenty-first, uh, at five P.M. One on Wednesday, May thirtieth, at five P.M. And then if we need one, one at June fourth, five P.M. Recommended actions to schedule for work sessions for the budget review.
Allode. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Miller, second by Councilmember Bullock. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item eleven is approved. Item twelve is a consideration of petition for annexation. Uh, this is member three-twelve. It's a fellowship of praise Church of God. This is thirty-two oh one Benin Road. The recommended action is to acknowledge the receipt of the petition and to adopt a resolution ordering the city clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition.
Allode. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Miller, second by Councilmember Rogers. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item twelve is approved. Item thirteen is a consideration of a contract amendment. Uh, this is with CH two M of Hill, North Carolina. It amends the scope of work, uh, including the design, bidding, uh, division of environmental quality, coordination and permitting activities, bidding, contract administration, and project management required on the twenty-seven, uh, inch breach beach branch outfall. The recommended action is to approve the contract amendment, authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the same on behalf of the city.
Allode.
Second.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Miller, second by Councilmember Bullock. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item thirteen is approved. Item fourteen is a consideration of contract again with the same company, CH two M Hill. Uh, this is for task one through three, planning, design, and bid services. This is for the Tar River Wastewater Treatment Plant Design. Recommended actions to approve the contract and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the amendment on behalf of the city.
Allode.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Watkins, second by Councilmember Bullock. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item fourteen is approved. Item fifteen is a consideration of the contract reported and designed for development of a city-wide wayfinding plan. Uh, includes detailed plans and fit documents for wayfinding in the downtown district. Uh, recommended actions to approve the contract, authorize the mayor to execute the same on behalf of the city. Do you hear motion? Go ahead, Mr. Bullock, and do you hear second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bullock, second by Councilmember Rogers. Any discussion?
Um, Mr. Mayor, can the manager give us any rough idea of the, the timetable, the schedule of this project and would you see maybe some of this implemented?
I don't have a schedule for that.
I don't have a schedule for that, um, Councilmember Rogers, but I certainly can get that for you. We have a motion by Councilmember Bullock, second by Councilmember Rogers. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Item fifteen is approved. Item sixteen is a consideration of award of a bill for circuit breakers for substation number seven, uh, addition to the power tech. Um, this is, uh, recommended actions to award the bid is recommended and authorize the purchasing division to issue a purchase order in accordance with the council's award.
Allode.
And second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Miller, second by Councilmember Rogers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item sixteen is approved. Item seventeen is a consideration of a change order with Barnhill Hope Brothers relative to the Rocky Mountain Event Center. I don't know if there's any more information or you have any more information on that? I think Mr. Penny's here, if you got any questions related to that. Anybody? All right, um, any, any motion?
Allode.
Second.
Uh, motion by Councilmember Knight, second by Councilmember Rogers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Uh, item seventeen is approved. Uh, item, uh, item number eighteen, um, let me just say that we did have five very good candidates for this position, um, and then gave each one the same questions, the same amount of time. Um, you know, I, I might just read the gentleman and said they didn't have anything to do with award. Uh, we really look at everything here in the city as, as, as being good or bad for the entire city and hopefully, I think the questions, uh, were simply to get a feel for the people that we're, we were interviewing and so, um, I, I think they all did a great job. I think every one of them would be passionate about serving in that ward. I don't think there's any question about that. But un- unfortunately, only one person can be appointed. And so at this time, if we want to consider the appointment of Councilmember to make a ward three seat.
Um, Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, we're, uh, would you please explain for the benefit of the citizens, if they've not heard already, for what period of, for what period of time the person we report tonight will be serving? What event will end that time period of their service? What will happen next?
Whoever i- is appointed, uh, tonight, or he or she will serve until the next city council election, which is in October of twenty nineteen. If he or she would like to seek reelection, they would, they would run in that election and then serve the remainder of former Councilman Williams' term to October of twenty-one. So it's not, it's not a four-year ti- or term, it's not a full term.
Does that answer your question? Okay. So we, uh, consideration of a form of Councilmember to make his ward three seat?
Uh, just for the record, could our city attorney, again, as he's done so in the committee of the whole, ask the question during the time that we received the application, during the time we received five names to participate in the process, were all five participants qualified to go through the process and to be seated at this particular time tonight? Could you explain that to the citizens of Rocky Mountain, especially to the citizens of Ward Three?
There is no requirement to go through the process. There's no requirement that you be a part of the process or that the city council conduct a process. It is up to the city council whether or not they conduct a process. And in this case, they, they elected to conduct the process. They're not limited to the, to the individuals who are pride, uh, for the seat. They could legally appoint someone, uh, that's not here tonight that has never even, uh, expressed any interest in the seat. The question as to whether all, uh, five of them could be sworn in tonight, there is one, the Reverend Jonah, who could not be sworn in tonight because he is not a registered voter in Ward Three. He will be a registered voter in Ward Three after May twenty-first, a week from today.
Also, uh, a follow-up question during the interview's pro- uh, process, if you were not here, I asked the- I asked a question. Did all the candidates get copies of the question? Because it appeared that one particular candidate had the questions where the mayor was reading off the questions. And several councilmembers somewhat agreed or acknowledged that one particular candidate was reading from the script that correlated with the question that the mayor was asking each candidate. And so, therefore, you was not in the room, and the city manager was in the room. That could be verified, and therefore, I feel if someone has given the candidates the question, then all of the candidates should have answered the questions. Therefore, the process that we're about to embark upon has been tainted. Not fair. It stinks in my nostrils and makes me sick on my stomach that I want to vomit. The vote is something very precious, it's sacred. We fought, blacks fought, women fought, for the right to vote. Rocky Mountain was sued because we couldn't get a black elected in this city by Sue Perry Cole and Naomi Greens and others in this room that organized the people in this city so we could have representation. The city of Rocky Mountain is celebrating one hundred and fifty years, and for over a hundred and thirty-five years, African-American was absent from this podium. Let me back up. Before reconstruction, we did have two out of Happy Hill. During the time of reconstruction, Jim Crow, they could no longer serve. I think it's not fair. I think it's a smokescreen, and it's a setup. That we do not follow the laws of the Constitution of North Carolina, the laws of the Board of Minutes. So, as the city, as the city attorney just stated, that one candidate could not be seated, therefore, the candidate should have gone through the process. And we should not hold up the process to someone qualified for the position. I have further comments. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I would like to make a motion, but first, I would like to go on. I would like to apologize to Reverend Jonah for him disconsolating to be actually accused by a fellow council member, another council member, of being just unethical and accusing him of coming to meetings for interviews, cheating pretty much. And I don't know if any council member actually agreed with that, he had interview questions, other than Mr. Knight himself. I want to present a motion that we appoint Reverend Jonah to fill the Ward three vacancy affected June eleventh and to be sworn at the next meeting. This is the only meeting for May. Our next meeting will be the first meeting in June. And at that time, I make a motion that we appoint him to that position. This is a special election for the purpose of filling the Ward three vacancy in order to continue, to create continuity with the council. The citizens, the election is coming up. The attorney just explained what the schedule is. So, anyone who would like to continue and run for the seat have opportunities to do so. But this special election now, this appointment, this special appointment now, is the council's prerogative to be able to do that according to North Carolina general statutes.
My second motion.
That is motion second. Any discussion?
Yes, Council, Mayor. I've been pretty quiet through this entire process because I've been trying to observe and listen, see what I see and hear what I hear. I will not support the motion to support Reverend Jonah. He's my personal friend. We've worked together and still do on many issues. What I'm gonna say tonight, I've said to his face because that's the only way I know how to deal. I cannot support anything that looks like it's unethical and that appears was already predetermined. It defies reason, from my perspective, that a person can move into a city and then be seriously considered to sit at the council of elders, to run the city. There are qualified candidates, people who live and reside in that ward, and Richard has a long history of service to Rocky Mountain, to eastern North Carolina, and to Canada. He does. Appreciate your service. But in this instance, it is a civil rights issue that we are violating because of personal relationship. We're setting a precedent that I believe Rocky Mountain will be used in legal discussions across this country and not to benefit poor and oppressed peoples. So, for someone who has given his life for poor people, he's walking into a situation that cast concern on his own integrity and character. And for that, I am saddened. But I will not be lumped into a category of apology for a process where the tape started before it came here. I am offended because this is not right. It's one thing for a person to gain the trust of his or her constituents through a vote. We've seen that before having one. But we've never had precedent, at least for the twenty years almost that I've been sitting on this council, where we've actually qualified someone before they were qualified. That's disturbing to me. It's condescending to me when you know there are people who live in that community, the various communities that comprise Ward three. Now, the burden of proof, regardless if there is a majority vote or not, will be weighed every time the mouth is open and the vote is cast. We'll know if the deal was cut by the way and the direction that this council moves. The city has grown and prospered, mostly in defiance of the powers that be that have ruled and controlled this entire region. Motivated by racism, and a community council has been inspired by the Ku Klux Klan. And now, given credence and credibility by black people who want to do right, but not being right. What I've learned is that I don't have to go with the crowd as long as I'm right. And this is not right.
Any other discussion?
I do, I do.
Any other discussion?
I do, Mr. Mayor and Council. I grew up in South Rocky Mountain. I was there all my life till I went to North Carolina Central University. My father passed from church up until November the twenty-ninth of his demise on Dunn Street and Arlington Street, which now I have taken on the mantle as the pastor of the church. I remember coming to Clark Street and Branch Street with Miss Warren and others and Mr. Jonah, and some of this stuff was in an uproar because I didn't want stakeholders to make some of the decisions that was made by the power that be. In ninety-nine, me and Ernest Taylor, we did a protest in this city. We marched from City Hall down Church Street to Tappo Park. We were on a mock funeral with a casket on a wagon. Said we're gonna bury Willie Nash. Just for a few moments, gentlemen, I greet you here on the banks of the James River in the year of our Lord one thousand seven hundred and twelve. First, I shall thank you, the gentlemen of the Colony of Virginia, for bringing me here. I'm here to help you solve some of your problems with slaves. Your invitation reached me on my modest plantation in the West Indies where I have experienced some of the newest and still the oldest methods of controlling slaves. Ancient Rome, ancient Rome would end us in my program.
Are you gonna read the time?
And if the boats sail south of the James River, now for our illustrious king whose version of the Bible was cherished. I shall, I saw enough to know that your problem is not unique, but I'm gonna cut it off here. We have a positive image campaign. It's the oldest trick in the book, run by the business men, white men, some, in this city. And they want to get one of us, calling no names, as they do, to run their agenda and tote their war. They call those Amputees Jigaboos and the rest of the names. And I'm gonna say it tonight, 'cause I stand on the shoulders of Fannie Lou Hamer that I'm sick or tired of being sick and tired. For someone to pull a trick like this, this city would be unrest. And like George Henry White said on the Congress floor, "You treat blacks like dirt, you rape them, you hang them, but one day, like the fingers, they shall rise." I say to you, in Ward three, rise up.
That's right.
Take your place.
Mr. Mayor, this is for a reporter, please.
You are out of order. Now, I was gonna say, kindness, but you are out of order.
I'm gonna refer to our attorney.
Refer to him.
Let's put it, I will close the debate. Okay. Please have a motion to close the debate.
Motion to close the debate.
Have a motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have four. All right, at this point in time, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Show hands.
Show hands. All right, we have four votes for it, against?
Y'all have it.
Um, we will appoint Reverend Jonah at our next meeting in June. Is there anything else coming for the council? If not, we're turning.